We're just having such a good time chatting, I didn't realize it was going over you. Welcome to our June 4, 2019 Board of Education meeting. And I'll ask Ms. Milligan if she'll have some vacation for us and if you remain standing for the pledge of allegiance after that.
Would you bow with me, please? Most gracious Father in heaven, we come before you this evening to ask that you pour out your blessings upon us as we go about doing the business that will impact our students and our teachers and the entire educational community in Brunswick County. Lord, we pray that you will guide us and lead us and give us the wisdom that we need to do what is best for them. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Join me in the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And first item, we have Ms. Dixon. And you don't look like Ms. Dixon. You're gonna present Ms. Dixon for us.
Yeah!
She's gonna have an introduction.
When you are as talented as Ms. Dixon is, you need an introduction.
All right.
So, right now, you know, most of the students are out, but we do have some really cool technology boot camps going on, the mastermind behind those in our presence. So, we have a newly certified education technology leader here with us tonight and in the school system, Acacia Dixon, our Director of Instructional Technology. So, passing this CETL exam demonstrates knowledge and skills to bring 21st century learning to our school district. This certification shows that Acacia Dixon not only possesses the deep understanding of the existing and the emerging technologies, but also knows how to use them so that our students and our teachers know how to use them to get the maximum benefit of 21st century learning. So, if I could get Ms. Dixon up here real quick. A certificate for you, tell us a little bit about what's going on at these boot camps.
Oh, you wanna talk about that? Okay.
Talk about whatever you want to talk about.
Yes, yes, yes. Just so you know, this certification is done through COSN, which is the Consortium for School Networks. It's a national organization that's got a longstanding reputation across the country. So, it was tough. Dodger Oates was there when I got the email that I passed, so that was a big deal. But we do have tech camp going on. We had thirty-five-ish sessions today, ninety-six total over the next three days. Teachers, I saw two-hundred-and-four evaluations of the sessions when I looked this afternoon, and I know not everybody completed one. Everybody was excited and learning new stuff and seemed to be having a good time. So, that's what we want. Then we covered coding, Chromebooks, Google, some of our platforms, some video production. There was a lot of stuff going on today. So, okay?
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it. I do want, I know you all were there for the graduations, but we've got some additional videos posted on our social media showcasing some of the musical performances and just all the, these graduations each year, you know, as you said, Ms. Cug, and it's the most wonderful time of the year in the school system, but when you see, you know, each year, last year was my first year going through the graduations, this year, it just seems like they get more wonderful and more wonderful. So, go to, if you get a second, go check out those videos, public watching on the Internet, you're already there. So, after the board meeting, switch over to the BCS Facebook page and check 'em out. Thank you.
Daniel, wait right there, if you would. I was gonna save this until the end, but you brought it up talking about graduations. I wanted to just publicly thank Daniel for his work, taking the pictures, being at all the graduations, putting it out on social media, flooding the community with everything that's Brunswick County. I just wanted to publicly say thank you for a job well done.
I appreciate that. One of the things, you know, I'm at like a year and six months or so now in the school system, and it's such an eye-opening thing to see what goes into everything, the daily life of the schools. And I think that it's, you can't showcase enough of the things, the positive things that go into the daily, the things that the public may not see. You build this image in your head, but you don't actually know how much work goes into it. So, that's one of my many missions is to continue that and only to make it better and better. And Brunswick County Schools gives us plenty to work with, so it's pretty easy to showcase this stuff.
And one of the things that a lot of folks don't know when it comes to the graduations is that, you know, we're in O.L. Williamson, but Acacia Dixon mans the Aqua Center, which is the overflow facility for graduations. And I think Saturday, Friday or Saturday, around five-hundred that were in there.
Friday night, we didn't turn people away, we hit five-hundred plus.
There's one on back there, she says.
All right, and now we have STEM Council. Ms. Jones.
Hi.
Good evening.
I'm Jamie Smith. There's been a change. I'm not Liz Jones. That's Neogenda, she's blonde. And so, I put together, well, we put together videos so that you guys could kinda see some of the things that we've done this year and some of our hopes and dreams for next year and the future. So, and then afterwards, we have a student here that would like to reflect with you. So, if you will draw your attention to the screen. Hopefully, the sound will be good.
The Brunswick County STEM Council began in 2012 when a teacher at Brunswick County Early College had a dream to become a STEM-designated school in North Carolina. She began with herself and administrator support and a few private business partners that were interested in learning about schools and how we could connect students in school to industries in Brunswick County that were related to the STEM fields. Since then, the Brunswick County STEM Council has grown immensely, and we have had more partnerships, more sponsorships, and more programs than ever before. But what does the STEM Council actually do? School representatives and representatives from Brunswick County and New Hanover County STEM Industries gather quarterly to plan opportunities and programs for students and teachers in Brunswick County. These collaborative moments between industry partners and school representatives allow for the best possible programs for our students that serve both the student and teacher needs as well as the needs of the industry partners. Although we did face some adversity as a community this year, our STEM Council was still going strong. The following is an overview of the highlights of some of the programs that occurred this year because of the STEM Council. Robotics in Brunswick County is flourishing. This year, two middle school teams, one at South Brunswick Middle that took home a trophy at their regional competition in Laurin Hill, North Carolina, against twenty-six other schools. Waukama Middle School also attended the regional competition at Broad Creek Middle School and brought home the award for mechanical design. Leland Middle School's robotics team went to the regional competition and won and went to the state competition and won an award for exhibiting core values.
And a team of middle schoolers from Leland are headed to North Carolina A&amp;T University in Greensboro for a robotics competition. That's where they will compete with the best of the best from all across the state. This is Leland Middle School's first time making the state first LEGO League competition. Hurricane Florence forced them to miss the Southeast Regional Competition, but they were able to go to a make-up tournament and made it to the top four out of sixteen teams. Robotics coach Sarah Anderson says the students are learning valuable scientific and life skills.
They've done all the coding themselves. They're basically teaching themselves how to learn. And then they go in and they learn how to speak in public, or they learn how to give a great presentation. They learn about citing sources, things that they're gonna have to use not only now, but way down the road as well.
Anderson says if they qualify in the state competition, they will move on to a national competition. Good luck, guys.
Our district-wide high school robotics team also had a great year and really worked hard at team building and teaching new members the ropes, as well as working with mentors from the community.
Oh, my baby. My downfall.
But what do the students think?
So, why do you think you should join robotics?
Honestly, whenever you go to robotics, it's not just about learning all these incredible skills and electronics, coding, and mechanics, it's also becoming part of a family. Now, you become part of that family, it just turns into this field of bonds where you learn upon each, you learn different things. You build upon it through a skill set, and you learn all these incredible applications that you can't get anywhere else. You may learn some of this in school, but you're getting real field experience, being able to apply this to something practical, and it's just fun.
Okay, so what's your favorite part about robotics?
My favorite part about robotics is honestly the networking. I love networking with people, getting to forge these bonds, whether it's for funding, whether it's to do coalitions with our team members and get everybody working together. It's so much fun to get in a pit or get to competition and see everybody collaborate.
Okay, thank you.
It's a great place for me to go in order to learn new things and be able to experience the things I'm interested in in an environment conducive to it with people that aren't going to ridicule me for making mistakes or not having the same talents as them. I really consider it a safe space for me because I'm not gonna be forced into doing anything I don't wanna do. I'm gonna be encouraged to try new things that I might not be confident in, but nobody's going to push me around, box me around, and tell me what to do. Everyone's there to do their own thing and to learn in their own way, and really, it's just a fun experience to make new friends, to learn new skills, and to get to experience the things that you're interested in without being ridiculed.
We also held a Science Olympiad Invitational for Brunswick County students and ordered practice for their events before the competition at UNCW.
The school students are getting ready to take home the gold in science competitions. Students put their talents to the test at an Invitational yesterday. Each of the groups represents schools across the county in chemistry, biology, physics, and other STEM-related studies. This is a chance for the students to compete on a smaller level before the regional competition in March at UNCW. Based on their performance at the Invitational, students get a chance to improve their project or study harder.
Events like this sort of help take what is in the classroom and bring it beyond and kinda give them a hands-on experience of where they would use the information learned in the classroom. And so, this is just one of those events where we can sort of make science come alive.
Brunswick County High School's instructional coach, Jamie Smith, says students have benefited from this Invitational. Last year, students received national awards.
Running this Invitational paid off because we had students go to states, we had teams win trophies, and we saw a unity among Science Olympiad coaches that really showed the true spirit of Brunswick County Schools. Let's hear from one of our champs.
I joined Science Olympiad to have another extracurricular to put on my college resume, but when I joined, it immediately became something that I enjoyed, and over the past several months, it's helped me learn teamwork and time management. And I think anyone that's interested in anything STEM-related should definitely join.
Another big event that was held through the Brunswick County STEM Council was STEM Speaks. This is an opportunity for high school students to come to BCC and hear about programs at BCC, hear from different guest speakers in the STEM fields in a TED Talks sort of way, and participate in a lunch and learn where they're provided lunch and they sit with students they don't know, as well as adults in the STEM Industries that they don't know, and they learn from them. But let's find out what students thought about this event.
It's encouraging to hear that women have been moving into STEM fields. In the past, it's been dominated by men, but that's changing.
I'm very glad I came today to attend STEM Speaks 2019. It was very nice to hear all the different speakers and just about their life and career paths. It was very eye-opening to hear that.
Other important notable programs that are sponsored or led by the STEM Council include Robicon, which was held this year at Coast and is an open event to the community to highlight robotics and exciting new things in Brunswick County. Girls Who Code Clubs that connect girls in high schools that learn how to code, as well as teachers and STEM industry partners who come and teach the clubs how to code, as well as the annual ROV competition that has teams build underwater remote-operated vehicles and works in conjunction with UNCW as well as BCC to hold the competition for students. It is important to recognize our STEM Council education partners, as well as our STEM Industry Partners, as well as our financial sponsors, as the majority of our work is grant-funded from grants written by our STEM Advisory Board members. This year, we secured nearly $10,000 in grants for our students. But who are the STEM Advisory Board members? Here's a list of all the Advisory Board members and their roles, responsibilities, and programs that they've worked on. Liz Jones is the Chair of the STEM Council, Jamie Smith, Ben Chapman, Ashonda Grissette, and Carrie McKenzie are on the Advisory Board, and Daniel Richardson is the STEM Coordinator. Being an Advisory Board member requires lots of extra time outside of the normal duties of being a school employee. Since one of the action items on tonight's board meeting agenda is approval of the extra duty supplement, we would like to remind you of the many hours that it takes to be an Advisory Board member in terms of planning and managing students outside of the normal school hours. We would like to thank the Brunswick County School Board for all of its previous support in years past. The proposed extra-duty supplement budget would reduce STEM Council support by two-thirds. Here is a list of our current programs, and here is a list of the programs that we will be able to implement with two-thirds of our current budget allotment. Thank you for your time and your continued support.
I'd like to present to you Dallas Russ. She is actually the Star News Student of the Week, we just found out, so yay to her. And she was a student at Waukama this past year and is a rising firebird at Early College.
Hi.
Welcome.
Hi, Dallas.
I'm Dallas Russ, like you just heard, and I've been participating in the Waukama Schools robotics program for the past two years. I've loved the robotics program because I've got to learn so many things, like programming, problem-solving, and engineering. And it's great because we get to integrate STEM through our robot and our project. During the robotics season, there's so many different opportunities, and going to the different places was just awesome, because I experienced my first actual experience of snow, since we don't get that a lot on here, on one of the meetings. And you just get to look at so many different ideas and different people's thinkings and everybody else's projects and ways of coding, it's just amazing to see. And during the robotics season, our team spends a lot of time practicing, and we're really dedicated. After school every day, Monday through Friday, we practice from directly after school from 2:50 to 4:30 or 5:00. And we put our heart and soul in just programming the robot and creating a project for each year's theme. And sometimes, we would come during our intervention periods or enrichment periods to give extra work. And my little sister, Emmy Russ, she's been in the robotics program for almost as long as I have, even though she still has two more years left at Waukama. And it's, robotics has just opened her eyes to a lot of new career opportunities, and because of robotics, she now wants to become a robotics engineer whenever she gets older. So, it's just really important to her, and she even asked for a robot of the same model that we use in the actual events for Christmas so that she could spend extra time on it at home. So, overall, robotics has just been a really amazing opportunity, and I've loved it every year. Even if we didn't make it to state this past year, it was just really, really fun. And it's been an amazing way to learn more and just get to learn more about teamwork too and work with others and have a whole new experience. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. All right, and we'll move on to the approval of the meeting agenda. We have approval of the minutes from the May 7 meeting, May 21 Operations Committee, May 21 Curriculum and Policy Committee, and May 21 Finance and HR Committee.
Do you approve the agenda, please?
Oh, that's a good idea. Okay, let's back up, all right?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, a motion to approve the meeting agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? All right, now, back to the approval of the minutes. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Okay, motion by Ms. Milligan. Second by Mr. Benton. All in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Consent items for approval. We have a contract for Xerox for copiers. We have a contract for Port City Builders for the bathroom refurbishments, a contract for Stonehenge Builders for bathroom refurbishments, and another contract with Stonehenge Builders for bathroom refurbishments. These are all at different schools, as you'll see noted. And then Town Creek Middle School change order request, number six, AIG. Well, we just have a lot of things on there. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items?
I make a motion, will you approve the consent items?
Motion by Mr. Benton.
Second.
Second by Ms. Milligan. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, now, we'll move on to the action items for approval. First is International Center for Leadership and Education contract.
Good evening.
Ms. White, present that.
Yes, so, this is just a quick recap of what we discussed at the committee meetings to go for action tonight, so we can begin the contract with the International Center for Leadership and Education. This is specifically going to be professional development for our school administrators. They will be working on our district message, basically, for expect, encourage, and empower with our staff and our administrators and how they lead with our schools. The process includes District Leadership Day, where we spend time with them developing the professional development. They work with us on two days during our summer retreat, and then follow up individually coaching at eight of our schools. So, this is a request to approve the contract for $74,520 for the International Center for Leadership and Education.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Mr. Miller. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Milligan. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you, Ms. White. And the signature authority for contract approvals.
Thank you, Ms. Good. Might I be involved in the bond? We have a lot of contracts working through operations, and because of that and the need to keep our work going, we are, we're asking the Board for consideration of two things. The first, raise the superintendent's signature authority for contracts to $100,000. Just, you know, we always gotta check ourselves. In New Hanover, it's $300,000. I know y'all necessarily hear what those people do, but I just kinda self-check. So, the other item is, if we have contracts that are larger contracts, for example, we just opened two roofing bids. One of the bids, one bid was approximately $400,000, and the other one was approximately $500,000. Both of those projects were advertised and for the required number of days, so there was a lot of access to attract bidders. We did have multiple bidders. All the bids were normal, and we went with the low bid like we always do. We're asking the Board to consider approving those contracts in committee meetings, provided the contracts have been pre-ordered by the finance director and the Board attorney, and that, and the Board has had the contracts to be in writing by Thursday preceding the Tuesday of the committee meetings. That, that just gets our work started a lot faster, sometimes the wait period is two weeks, sometimes the wait period is three weeks. So, that's what we're asking, asking, asking consideration of.
All right. I think it's always been the prerogative of the Board to approve a contract at a committee
meeting if you want it. I mean, it's not a policy that says we can, is it?
Not that.
Yeah, I mean, we can do it at a committee meeting, and we have in the past, haven't we, Fred?
All right. Any other questions, or?
I don't have a problem with it, as long as it's, if it's a time-sensitive thing that's holding up work. But if it's something they can wait till, you know, till the full meeting or whatever, but if it's something time-sensitive, I understand that.
All right. Well, do I have a motion to approve your specifications set forward?
So, move.
Mr. Miller, have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lemon, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, and Mr. Foster, I presume, number three, our extra-duty supplement schedule.
I don't think, I don't want... It's basically the same information that I presented at council or committees, and based on some feedback, we went back and did a little bit more analysis and made a few adjustments to this. Again, what I'd like to start off by saying is that for all of these extra-duty supplements, these folks put in a lot more hours than they get paid for from these stipends, and so, our work in this was to try to ensure that we were paying equitable stipends for equitable types of work or that type of thing, and making sure that we were paying competitively what the city and other districts were these same types of responsibilities. Again, if you probably were to break it down, what hourly rate outside of what their normal work hours are, none of these will be even minimum wage. So, just to understand that this is a, it's a stipend for their extra duties, but in no way is it intended to fully compensate them for all the things that they do in addition to their resident teaching and role. The things that, again, just to lead back through it very briefly, our extra-duty supplements have evolved over time. You guys were concerned about some inequity, so we went back and took a look at what we had. We got job descriptions from the various areas and regards to what the extra duties required. We collected some data from some other school districts, and then we developed the recommendations that we provided to you. The findings, most districts do provide these, these types of supplements for the extra duties. We are competitive with other districts in what we are offering for those, and the recommended adjustments are for equity purposes primarily. There's no change to the majority of the areas. There is a small increase for the AIG Chair from $400 to $500 for that role, and that again is for equity purposes. There was a reduction for the MPS S Coordinator from $1,000 to $500, again, for equity purposes. There was a recommendation to eliminate the $1,000 supplement for EC compliance audit due, because those duties are now rolled into the EC Regional Coordinator job description to... and soundly study that we just implemented, that's accounted for in their sounder rank for those positions. And then to reduce the STEM council from 1,500 dollars to 500 dollars because of the way that that is structured now and to be, again, to be equitable with the same level of responsibilities that some other areas have. And so, what you've asked, well, first off, I've asked her questions in regards to that, I think Mr. Miller answered questions.
Well, I had a question, in the video, there was something said, I think, about reduction of services from STEM council based on what's been done to the extra pay, extra duty, did I understand that correctly? And I didn't quite make that connection of why.
Yeah, now, that was, I was not privy to that and I would, I would assume that the responsibilities of STEM council would, would stay the same even though the amount of money is being, is being reduced for equity purposes.
I can answer that if you'd like. So, there currently is a team of five people, basically, that do all the duties for the STEM council. You know, they take away time from their families, basically, to do those events and if you drop their stipends by 1,000 dollars, although it may seem more equitable, there's no way they're going to be able to take away the same amount of time from their families to do those sorts of programs. So, the example given in the video was just, you know, an example that if the funding is reduced by two-thirds, then they're not going to be able to do two-thirds of their extra duties beyond the general STEM council sort of programming. So, that kind of answers the question. Also, as a part, you know, STEM council funds stipends for people, but the grants we write fund the programs and so, we may not be able to spend quite as much time on grant writing for the STEM council if we don't have the time to do it.
Mr. Foster, would it cause a problem if we tabled this, at least till committee meetings, to review that issue? You know, I love all the STEM council activities, so I don't want to see a reduction if we can handle that in some way. I don't know if we have consensus about that, but...
I'm just trying to understand, although the stipend is not for the programs, it's for the person. Right, so, why, I'm just questioning, I'm just saying, why would you not continue the programs just because of the stipend? Some of these other, some of these other positions may have a difference in cost as well, but they probably will continue to do the same, these chairs will, department chairs will still do the same thing, so why would that not keep happening?
Outside of school, you know, department chairs are doing department chair meetings and things like that during the school day. The majority of our STEM council events are Saturdays or after-school events and so, just frankly, they can't take away that much time from their family if they're not being compensated for it or come to some sort of...
With that in mind, Madam Chair, Mr. Lemon, I would make a proposal that we leave it in as is. Or we can still table it if you choose to do that, but I, I think we should leave it as is.
Can I add just one, one addition to the piece, and that is, there was, it, it has evolved over time, just to try to come near to the full picture. At one time, there was, it's my understanding, it was all my time, but there was a stipend that was paid for a STEM coordinator and it was like 7,500 dollars that that person got for running a STEM program. That person left and the people that were on the council that were not getting, my understanding, were not getting any stipend at the time, said that we will take that on just with that 7,500 dollars up amongst the five of us and that's how it was established, 1,500 dollars for each of them. Then, when you guys asked us to take a look at it, this past year, a STEM coordinator again was hired and is receiving a stipend of 3,000 as a STEM coordinator. And so, even though this year, the STEM council received the 1,500 dollars per STEM council because that's what was in the plan and we didn't change it. When we reviewed it, we said, well, now there is this, this leadership position back in place and so, we recommended the reduction based on that whole picture. And so, there are other areas that I think there are councils that do things and have outside performances or things that go on outside of the regular school day that don't receive any kind of stipend. And I can't think, I mean, I would ask if Molly or the barrel or anybody had any specifics in regards to councils or those types of things where teachers and staff do things outside of work that don't receive any stipend at all, perhaps this E-council or the science of it, they had a competition, the people doesn't know that's part of STEM, but there are some other things that people do that they don't get the stipend.
If it were working, Mr. Foster, by splitting that amount of money among the five people, why did we add that STEM coordinator position back in? What, what brought that about?
Is the stipen, I don't, I can't see it on the screen, is this just one stipend for the coordinator? Is that what we're?
Right.
I'm just trying to see, I don't...
And that's what I...
Okay, so, the council... So, the STEM council, that's...
Now, we're paying 10,000 instead of 7,000, that it was, it's actually gone up on us.
Right, right.
Over time.
So, that was my question, if, if we had a, a process that was working, why did we change it? And I don't know the answer to that because I wasn't aware of how that actually came into being.
Are the people who are actually receiving this 1,500 dollars the ones actually running that 300 hours of Science Olympia meetings every week after school?
I believe so.
They are the actual?
But yes, now, we do have school-wide coaches that are teachers, you know, that are not a part of the STEM council that also participate in average school things, but in terms of the planning and planning events, that's the STEM council advisory board.
But one of the, one of the positions is a coordinator on that advisory board. So, that would not, so the coordinator would get a separate amount versus being, and the other members, the advisory members would get the other amount? Is that what I'm seeing? So, has there been a stipend for the council in the past? Or is this, I mean, that's, that's right here, is that new?
It's been reduced.
Right, but, okay, so, there has been, right, and the coordinator had stayed the same? Okay, and the coordinator had stayed the same? Okay.
I'm suggesting a reduction. I'm okay if you guys want to table it and talk about it at committee meetings only at the next committee meeting. I just would like to get something approved so that we can get it out and communicate so that the folks that are taking the vote will know, you know, kind of what we're getting. There's not that much to the majority of, so...
Well, would anybody have an objection if we, if we just pulled the STEM council and STEM council coordinator to talk about those specific ones and then go ahead and approve the rest of the items? If there's not a problem with that? That way, we can go ahead, I mean, if that's, if that's a reasonable option, if you would still want to discuss the STEM council? Okay, all right.
I make a motion to accept the list minus the STEM council and STEM council coordinator for approval.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then we'll just have a discussion about the STEM council at the committee meeting. How about that, okay? And maybe if we can have, if you're able to give us that presentation again, then maybe we can, you know, look at that again, all the things that you had outlined, that might be helpful to look at. Okay, thank you.
One additional thing, to deal with the compensation. At the committee meeting, we talked about, and I got nods, that it was okay to add the three and a half percent plus the stuff on my 10% to the classified salary schedule. Effective July 1st and then you wouldn't be given a local supplement in just payments in October and April. It would be clouded into the salary schedule. I don't know whether that takes a formal approval or not, but I don't think, I don't think we had a formal approval from the committee to do that and I would ask you to...
Okay, so... Okay, so, do we need, go ahead, okay, so, if you will state your, state your case again.
Currently, classified employees receive a three and a half percent supplement as a bonus payment in October and in April. And what we are recommending is that we take the money that is satisfied for that and increase on classified salary schedule all the rates on salary schedule by three and a half percent so that those employees receive that money each month as they work and then if they are eligible for longevity, that amount, if their longevity is calculated based on their base salary, which would be inclusive of that, but now it's not.
So, that three and a half percent would be dispersed monthly?
Yes.
With the regular pay?
It would be dispersed in their regular pay.
Which would help increase their longevity.
Yeah.
So, we're talking four percent?
We had what we said in, in committee. We did nine presentations to groups of employees and have done a couple since that time and presented that to the classified employees so that they would understand what was going on and anybody that were in those groups would nod their heads and say, yes, that makes sense. Especially since we're giving them the heads up. The problem is, you don't want to do it when they're expecting it in October and they may have already made plans for it and that kind of thing. So, we want to make sure we get that notification out to them that this isn't coming in October.
It's just going to be a...
It's coming now.
Okay.
And so, that, because, you know, some people make plans for Christmas based on that and then in April, then they plan for the summer based on that, so we want to make sure we communicate that.
Okay.
So, we're talking a four percent total, basically, because we're going to increase longevity costs as well, well, by doing this, right? We're talking about a quarter percent, probably, right? With the five percent longevity on top of the, something like that, okay?
Not everybody on there would be...
Technically, right now, it's three and a half percent is what he said at first.
Right.
Okay, bless you. So, do we have a motion to approve the three and a half percent?
I make a motion to approve three and a half percent to be distributed in every paycheck.
Second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Milligan, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Mr. Frank. Yes.
Now, we did, I think I not have had agreed that teachers would receive that bonus for National Board a different month, correct? January, is that what we decided on?
Yes, I believe so.
Freya, I'm pointing at you on that one.
We can do that, yes, it's currently paid, I think, in, in December.
We want to separate it from the state.
From the check that they get their retro payment and we can do that, it's more of an administrative thing.
Right, I just want to make sure that happens.
Okay, all right. And fourth item is an appointment to Brunswick County Community College Board of Trustees. Do we have the information?
Can I have a question?
Yes.
Pre- a question here about, she's afraid that, that whether we approve that, that there may be some question as to whether they get their local supplement monthly or whether we're putting that local supplement into the salary schedule so that everybody on the salary schedule is increased by that three and a half percent. And so, do you feel comf, do you feel comfortable enough in the notes that we have a...
It's included in the salary or not?
It's in, it's included in the salary schedule and then they would be paid based on that salary schedule that would be inclusive of that additional three and a half percent.
Okay.
I just wanted to show...
All right. Okay, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe Mr. Frank Iler was the one to be...
Consider for nomination to the board.
All right, and it would be, be for a four-year term?
Correct.
All right. And he has served, how many terms has he served?
Several.
Several.
Probably his third.
Okay.
We've received no other...
Nomination?
We haven't received, and there may be someone that are interested, that have expressed that to me, that may be a possible interest, but nothing for...
How do people get notified that there's an opening? I'm not sure how this occurs.
The notification comes... Right, it can't be advertised if, if the board chooses to do that.
I don't know if there's a number of terms that you can, I mean, if you can, how many terms you can serve consecutively or if you have, I don't know if there's any, I haven't really, I haven't checked to see. Well, not...
We need to determine the latest that we can make a nomination to the board and if that's something that we need to do, we may be able to table the decision tonight and come back at a later date, particularly if there's an interest there. I would hate to exclude anyone who's interested and just had not formally submitted themselves for nomination.
Did anybody speak to Ms. Iler?
Briefly.
And if she's still interested, or I know she goes playful.
Yes, he was interested.
Well...
Yeah.
I want the pleasure of the board if you would want to allow more time for...
I nominate Frank Iler for Board of Trustees.
Do I have a second?
My second.
Any further discussion? All right. All right, so, all in favor? All right?
Uh-huh.
All right, any opposed? All right, Mr. Iler will be nominated again to Board of Trustees. All right, and now, discussions by superintendent board members?
Okay. You may be already aware, but I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware that we have another, we've lost another one of our family members here in Brunswick County Schools, Jody Lynn Bromucci, a teacher at Cedar Grove Middle School. She passed away Sunday, May 26th after a battle with breast cancer and there will be a memorial service held 1:00 PM Saturday at Winter Park Presbyterian Church in Wilmington. I know Mr. Hayes called me Sunday morning to let me know, last Sunday morning, to let me know that the, his teacher had passed away, so I wanted to make the board and the public aware of that. On a lighter note, I want to take an opportunity to read to you a news release from the Government Finance Officers Association, which says, "The certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting has been awarded to Brunswick County Board of Education by Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for its comprehensive annual financial report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. An award of financial reporting achievement has been awarded to the individual or department designated by the government as primarily responsible for preparing the award-winning certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting." So, I just wanted to take this opportunity to recognize Ms. Freya Cahill and her department for yet another year of superb financial accounting. Also, as you know, as you see noted on the agenda, we've rescheduled our committee meetings from the 25th to the 18th of June, so please make that note if you have not. And also, it appears on the announcements that superintendent's evaluation is coming and I'm sure that we will get that information out, the process by which we will be evaluating. I'd like to just bring up as a, as a, as a basically kind of recommendation, as you know, we, we tabled pretty much our discussion on student reassignment some months ago because we wanted to make... some months ago because we wanted to make sure we had all information to make some truly informed and accurate, as accurate decisions as we can make. One of the things that I would recommend in doing so and going forward, as you know, we are scheduled to open Town Creek Middle August of 2020. So we will definitely need to pick up the conversation on student reassignment and boundary lines and that entire conversation that we were having before. But one of the recommendations that I would like to pose to the board, just to get your feedback and input, is possibly looking at doing a redistricting committee. And on that committee, having two board members work with me and my staff, whether we are looking at getting companies who do this type of work to come in and facilitate this with us or however we choose to do it. I just think if we had two board members that were staying abreast of this entire process, those two board members could definitely keep the, the rest of the board informed, as, as I continually would as well. But also any constituents that we have in the, in the community, you can be able to keep them abreast of things that are taking place. So I just wanted to get your input and to see how you would receive moving forward with a committee of sorts to move forward in student reassignment.
That could be beneficial.
I think it'd be great.
Mm-hmm.
Sort of as many as soon as possible, once the meeting is established.
Right. Get the committees established and get the, get the information. I know Sue and I have been talking at length. We talked about it in cabinet about getting, actually rerunning some numbers, some demographics, because things, as you know, in the North have exploded even since our last demographic forecast was done. So we want to look at getting, again, as close to accurate as we can and make some informed decisions. So if this is something that you are in favor of, we can definitely look at doing that and, and moving forward with the plan.
Yeah. Sounds good.
All right. Any other discussion with that? If not, we can, we can move forward and start forming the...
Ms. Rutledge, you've been, have or have not been in contact with some companies?
I've talked to a couple, yes, sir.
Can...
I'm having a meeting with one next week. Just getting educated, I guess, is the best way to put it. And making sure that at least I'm asking the right questions as far as, as I know, so that bring those questions to an initial meeting. There's probably more questions than, than what I bring, but I'm making some progress, yes.
I guess I'm asking how quickly we can take a look at companies and what they offer and what assistance they would give and...
It will depend on what, they'll give me a budget estimate. There's, there's three, two North Carolina companies. Also, the Demographer, that's for better information, does the same kind of work. So those kinds, one of them is a true, they presented to the board last week. The other company has the former director of bus transportation for the EPI. So both of those companies have a lot of experience. If, if the, if the size of the contract is larger than fifty thousand dollars, we would have to have a formal selection. If it's smaller than that, we have an informal selection, which is a little bit faster. Would you probably get started, let me think on that one and get back to you. I will know better next, after next, when we establish a meeting with interest about a timeline. That's a milestone.
So wait the committee meeting?
We'll have a...
Thank you.
I'll have to, that's right.
Good. What's Sherry's recommendation?
For...
On taking on a contractor to do all this?
In full support of it. I think we need the expertise of outside companies who do this for a living to give us the best expertise that we can use in, in student reassignment.
Should we send Ms. Rutledge any questions we have or anything like that so she can run those soft by everybody to, for instance, like priority goals we might have of trying to keep the kids in the same middle school and high school together?
I think one of the things, probably be the best thing to do, if you would funnel those to me so I can give a compilation of questions and things that may need, be needed and we can pass that on to where we need it. And her getting it from five board members may be a little cumbersome.
All right. Anything else? All right. Do I have a motion to...
Just a thing, you know, I hope we'd remember the staff member we lost, but also our neighbors in Columbus County have lost one tragically this week, too. An art teacher, I think, at South Columbus. Stay in prayer for her and her family.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. Do I have a motion for closed session?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Lemon, all in favor? Any opposed? All right. Would you like to take a five-minute break?